Kelly, did Justina Jo get the link?
Yes, she did, and I just resent it.
Okay.
All right, well, welcome. It's 7:00 PM on Tuesday, April 27th, and I will call to order this regular meeting of the Ferndale School Board. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'll rise and join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I know that you all noticed my shirt when I stood up, Ferndale softball. I'm just going to put in a plug. They have a game tomorrow to raise awareness about breast cancer. The games are at 3:30 and 5:00 o'clock. So if you have a few minutes who want to go by and support them, that would be great. All right. First item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or make any changes.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. During this time when we're conducting our meetings via video conferencing, we are accepting public comment through a portal on our district website or through email. And to the extent possible, we're reading aloud comments received prior to the board meeting. Comments that come in through the chat feature during the board meeting tonight will be reviewed and answered after the meeting. As of 7:00, we had not received any public comments for tonight's meeting. The next item on the agenda is focus on students, and this is an update on the reopening of schools. I know that this week, we're taking a big step forward with our reopening process. All of our K-12 students who choose to will be returning to five days per week, full-time, in-person learning, beginning this Thursday, April 29th. I think I speak on behalf of the whole board in saying we're very proud of our district staff for making this happen. We believe it serves the best interests of the majority of our students, but we know it has taken tremendous effort, and I want to turn the floor over now to Dr. Quinn and her team to share an update on the reopening plans.
President McLaurin, I would just echo what you said, that I just want to thank the staff. This has been a really big effort, and our staff has been has been tremendous in making it happen, even those who maybe wouldn't have made this decision. So I'm very appreciative. As you know, one of the accommodations that we made to allow the work to happen was to make yesterday, today, and tomorrow asynchronous days for our hybrid kids. So our teachers front-loaded their lessons, and they've been learning remotely so that we could transform our schools for this new setup. And so with that said, I also want to extend a thanks to our students and to their families, who I have not received a single complaint about these three more days. And so I think that's just a testament to what a partnership this has been, because I know that's a hardship on families, but we couldn't figure out a better way to give everybody the time they needed to make this transition. Finally, I would just say, not that I'm competitive, but we are the first district in Watcom County and really the region to get all of our students who choose back into full-time, five-days-a-week in-person learning. And I know, I am proud of us for that. So anyway, thank you very much. And we, I'm good with this time, I'm actually going to turn it over to John to say a couple words about, because one of the questions that's come up is, you know, we're seeing community virus rates creep up, and what is this going to mean? So, John?
Yeah, so this falls under the category of information I'm going to give you that you hope we never use. But part of the CDC and Department of Health guidelines do involve some community metrics, and the metric that we're watching really carefully is the new cases per 100,000. And what they've what they've said is, if you have a high rate of community transmission in an environment that you can't cohort, that you need to go back to the six-foot distancing. Six-foot distancing means that we have to go back to a hybrid. It doesn't mean you have to go all distance. It means you go back to a hybrid. So high community transmission, as has been defined, is 200 cases per 100,000 over two weeks. Currently, as of this morning, if you read the update, our rate as of, the most current numbers we have is sitting at about 175, and it is creeping upward. A week ago, I think we were around, you know, about 150, 140 something. So it's moving. It's not spiking the way it did right after Thanksgiving or right after Christmas. It's slowly increasing. Probably the most worrisome part of that is we followed the trend from Pierce King and St. Thomas County, and their rates are quite a bit higher than ours are. Theirs went up before ours did, and then when they went down, ours trailed to go down following there. So we've kind of been a few weeks behind them all along the way. Our best hope is that we can get this six weeks in before it starts to follow that trend, but there's certainly no guarantee. The other thing I'll say about that is the 200 isn't an on-off pitch. If we start approaching that 200, we'll be looking at the trend and what appears to be happening over the long haul, and that's to provide some consistency. It doesn't make any sense to hit 201 one day and shut down and hit 199 and bring it back. And so we'll be talking over the next couple of weeks on how to handle that if the trend looks like it's going to continue to take us over that 200. And the Health Department tells us that it's in our community's best interest or sorry, to go to hybrid, not shut down, go to hybrid.
Thanks, John. Questions or? Okay, the other part of our report tonight, I mentioned in my letter to you that we have another reopening plan called for by the legislature and due on June 1st. It's got another name, and I can't even remember it right now, but we will be coming back to you to approve a plan. We'll give it to you in writing, but we won't have a lot of other opportunities to talk to you about the contents of the plan. We haven't made ours yet, although it really reflects work we're already doing. But we'll come back to you at your May 25th meeting and be asking you to approve a plan. We'll show it to you in advance. But I wanted to give Kelly and Fay an opportunity tonight to briefly introduce you to what is in this plan so that you know what's coming. So Kelly and Fay?
I'll go ahead and get started. As Linda said, I know she had mentioned this briefly in one of her updates, and we're just going to tonight just give you a brief overview of the requirements of the plan, and then we'll give you the specifics a little later. But it is titled "The Academic and Student Wellbeing Recovery Plan", and it was developed in response to two laws, one that was federal and one state. And basically, those two laws, we're connecting the planning for the academic and student wellbeing recovery to eligibility to receive ESER funds. So this plan is directly tied to our ability to receive those funds through our creation of a plan that supports academic and student wellbeing. So school districts in Washington State will respond to that requirement through the one comprehensive plan that we will submit to OSPI. And as Linda mentioned, the first submission of this plan is due on June 1st, and it will be the first of three submissions. So the first submission is on June 1st, and that's when we are submitting our initial plan for summer and fall implementation. The second phase of implementation is due November 20, excuse me, of 2021, and that's where we will review our student data, as well as the effectiveness of our Phase 1 strategies. And then we will adjust at that point for more longer-term planning. And the third phase of the plan is actually due in April of 2022, and that's as we continue through our continuous improvement cycle for implementation. And just a couple more things that I'll share with you about the plan. It really is focused on a safe return to in-person instruction, as well as description of our continuum of services that we provide our students, which are very much related to the assessments and other instructional strategies. Once again, it's required for us to receive our ESER funds. We are required to seek public comment and also post our plan on our school district website. Once again, as Linda mentioned, we are required to receive school board approval prior to submission. We are also required to use an equity analysis tool in the development of our plan. And so that will be the first round of planning that we will submit on the first, and Fay's going to tell you a few more of those requirements for that June 1 submission. Go ahead, Fay.
Thanks, Kelly. Great overview and introduction to the plan. There are some things, components, that we are required to describe. And as Linda mentioned a little bit ago, it actually falls very much in line with all the work that we are currently doing. So we're not going to have to we're not going to have to start from scratch on any one of the components. The first part is the diagnostic assessment tools that we'll use by grade level, both for academic and for student wellbeing. For our student wellbeing, we've adopted Panorama, which we've been giving surveys already to our students to assess where they're at in their own health and wellbeing and readiness for school. And then in our diagnostic assessments, K through 8, we've been using already for both reading and math, and then high school have been using their assessments within their content areas, as well as all the formative assessments that go along with both grade levels and content. And within those assessment tools, looking at the results, and then identifying where we need to focus additional time, provide supports for our students, whether that's extracurricular opportunities or whether it's opportunities within, but within the school day to support both academic and wellbeing. We are asked to include an identification of our demographic groups and subgroups that need specific and intentional supports, and then a plan for implementation of those interventions. And then we're also looking for a plan to address our students' learning recovery and looking at how we're identifying and correcting any disproportionate impact from COVID, because as we know, some of our students and families were impacted far more than others. All of our students are returning with very different experiences. So making sure that we understand those, analyze those, and then create that plan to support them. We're looking to describe the additional instruction, intervention, and academic supports we'll provide, and then also what additional student wellbeing supports will be put into place within our schools, as well as any extracurricular opportunities. And we've been having lots of conversations as we're going into our budgeting process about those exact support systems that we are putting in place, including our work with our district-wide focus on our multi-tiered systems of supports for our students, the MTSS model, as well as our academic supports. And then finally, we're looking at the opportunities, describing the opportunities that we're offering, such as summer school and the additional instruction that we'll be offering and providing throughout that. So that's kind of a overview of what we have to include in the report. And like we said, we're doing a lot of this work already. So it's just going to be a case of putting all of what we're doing into one place and then making sure that we're not missing components, and if we are addressing those.
Thanks, Kelly and Fay. I don't know at that, at this point, whether or not you have questions.
I was curious to know if there has been any change in the students who are going to be engaged in remote learning as their only way of education.
You know, Andrew, we went round, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that. There will be, no, not significant. There's some tweaks, you know. But at the middle school level, we've been having our remote students do be on-the-screen mornings and then doing asynchronous in the afternoon. And because we have a fully remote school for them, the same with elementary, and we talked about maybe we should increase their time because we're increasing the in-person time. And then what we came back to was, does that really make sense? To have kids on the screen more, and they're in their own cohorts. I mean, you know, they have their own teachers, so they're remaining essentially the same. At the high school level, I guess really it's staying the same mostly, too. They have, we have remote-only teachers for English, science, math, and physical education, and all of their other courses, they are live streaming in. And so they really have to do six periods a day because they have to join when the class is. Heather, did I say any of that wrong? Are you changing anything at the middle level?
The only thing that we're changing or adding at the middle school is we're adding instructional time on Wednesdays. When we met with our virtual teachers and we took feedback from parents that we had heard on, heard from, and thinking about how much screen time it would mean for a virtual student to stay and follow the in-person schedule, what we chose to do was add another half-day on Wednesdays. But essentially, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday schedule remains the same, but we added in Wednesday. So they'll attend all six periods for a shorter period of time on Wednesdays.
And the other thing that we have done in anticipation of more students being asked to quarantine, you know, they're sitting three feet apart, but close contact is still six feet. We have equipped our middle school staff with the ability to livestream their lessons because it's not as, it's not as simple as now you're quarantined for a week and you can go join the remote school because they're their own school doing their own thing. So while they're quarantined, they're going to have to rely on joining their classes through livestream. I think I told you that part of this next six weeks is to, a bit of a rehearsal for us to find out how it's going to work in the fall. And it was one of the arguments for me, strong arguments for me, of going five full days and not building in from the start a way to do things that you can't figure out how to do in the school day. Because we'll try this, and we won't, then we won't know if we can do five full days. So we think we have good plans, but we have to try them out. Melinda?
As a parent, I got, my son goes to Ferndale High School, and the handbook was sent today to them. And it talks a lot about if you don't pass your attestations to stay home to Zoom, if you're feeling sick, stay home Zoom. If a student is truly sick, like sick, you're not, you wouldn't go to school in a normal situation. How do they handle that? Because that wasn't in the handbook at all. Just call in and say, my child won't be.
Yes, right, exactly, exactly. I don't.
There was some of the verbiage in there where it says, like, if you're feeling sick, stay home and zoom in with your classes. It's like, no, you still can have a sick day where you're not going to attend.
Yes, yes, we can clarify that, but yes. This is for the kind of symptom that you would probably come to, at least I would have probably come to school with before. You know, oh, I'm not really that sick, so I'm gonna.
Society as a whole will probably change.
Yes.
And should have before.
Yes.
Other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you for the update. We'll certainly be thinking about all of you this Thursday. And, you know, I think this is the first time in 13 and a half months we'll have students in school full-time. So it's, it's a huge leap for us. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to the admin team, to the teachers, to all the support staff on behalf of the board. We really appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this because we know it is not an easy thing to pull off. So thank you, and I'm proud of us for being the leader in our area, you know, for getting kids back in school.
I also want to give kudos for the last 13 and a half months, too. But, I mean, there's rocky areas, but man, we made it 13 and a half months.
Yeah, great point, great point. All right. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, 4.02. And this is receiving the superintendent's monitoring reports for Results Policy 2.7, which focuses on academic achievement in health and physical education. Excuse me. This is one of the board's 25 governance policies that we monitor on a biannual basis. At each of our business meetings, we receive a new policy report from Dr. Quinn, which we then have a month to read and review before discussing it at our next business meeting. So this month, we're receiving the report on Results Policy 2.7. So at this time, I will turn the floor over to Dr. Quinn to introduce the report.
Well, the first thing I'm going to say is that before this meeting is over, you will. I just realized I need to send it over to Kelly Warner to post. And so when I get a chance to do that, I will do that. This month's report, as you just said, is on physical education and health. Kelly and Fay, Fay did a lot of this report. Kelly and Fay gathered the data. I'm going to say upfront that one of the admissions that I make in the introduction to this report, and this is on me, not on my team, is that we still haven't fully adopted a process that makes this, this staff work and makes it. We're still a bit in the process of, you know, this report in 2000, you received the last iteration of this report in 2018. At that time, it was completed by Scott Britton and Mark Hall, who set a series of goals and made a series of promises, which was what they should have done. And I did not make sure that those were communicated fully to all of the impacted staff. So when, a couple of months ago, when we started working on this report, we were once again in the, in the position of having to retroactively collect data and figure out where we had. Anyway, it's not the way it's supposed to work. I will tell you that the process of doing this has caused us to have many conversations. I think Fay and I had some breakthrough conversations even in this past week about how we can implement these policies in the way they were meant to be implemented and how we can involve staff in not only developing the policies, but developing the goals and moving forward. I don't, I mean, I think we're going to give you a very honest appraisal of our work in physical education and health, and some of it is work that I'm proud of, but others in other places. And once again, this is not a reflection on our staff. It's a reflection on our lack of collecting the data on what. It's not that the staff isn't doing the work. It's our lack of setting up systems where we can report on that. So anyway, before you leave tonight, it will be in your board docs. And then you were probably going to say this, Andrew, but Kelly will bring you a hard copy because I know you prefer those when she comes to get your signatures on things. That's all I have to say about that, Andrew.
Okay, thanks. And I was going to say that.
Okay, well, I knew you probably were.
But I won't, I won't say it again.
I've got a question. When this is distributed, when we receive it, could there be like a group of, you know, the staff that needs to see it, that receives it at the same time? So they kind of, I mean, how, what were some of the brainstorming ideas that you had in conveying the information to the staff that needs to see it?
Fay, do you want to respond to that?
Absolutely. Melinda, that's a great question. One of the things that we've been talking about is because this one's health and PE, health and fitness, gathering all of our K-12 health and fitness teachers together. They all provided input for the report, so they have at least seen kind of pieces of it and understand what we were collecting, what we were asking for. So gathering them, talking through it with them, setting up a plan for making sure that they know what we're asking for as they collect over the next two years, that when we report back in two years' time, that really it's truly their report. And then kind of again, working with them, setting the, establishing the goals with them, setting up data collection systems, and making sure that they have input on what we're doing, what we're asking of them. They're doing great work and, you know, really reminding them when I was working with them. Kelly, same with the elementary team. It's like, this isn't a reflection on you. This is like, we're just learning that this is how we're putting things together and making those adjustments with the team as we, as we move forward. And then we're talking about coming back to them, you know, three to four months before the report's due again to, you know, kind of keep track with them of where they are in the process and make sure that they're prepared to share their data with us. So kind of having that cycle of review, reflection, planning, implementing, review, reflection.
It kind of seems like how we're on a two-year plan, and we see it every two years, that people like the health and PE teachers, that they would see this more than once every two years. So getting them on some sort of like micro cycle that doesn't have all the policies, but has theirs multiple.
Yes, yes, that's, we've, we've, we've got a whole series of things. Fay started recently writing an article on, which one did you, you wrote an article on the science one. So it's more of a, hey, we've been writing on science, and we put it in our staff electronic newsletter, just getting them on a cycle. But for example, in this, one of the things that we said in this report is that we would keep track of, you know, we know a lot of education happens in health and PE classes, but we also know that there's a lot of other things that we do as part of the school culture that are part of health and and physical education, including our extracurricular activities, but also some of our assembly programs. Well, we just need to set up a system where if Heather's going to have in a program that relates to our health and fitness goals, she logs it in, and we have that, instead of us coming two years later and saying, what have you done in the last two years? And that we know, you know, and so I just ask your patience. We're we're doing the work, and now we're to the point where we're figuring out how to make the work become the driver instead of chasing what we're doing. So great conversations going on, but we're not there yet.
Is food service part of the report?
You know, they aren't in this one, but that is, health and fitness should be. I'm going to make a note of that right now.
That's a great idea.
You should definitely make a note of that on your cover sheet. Yeah. They should definitely. All of doing these is making us think of everything in a more holistic way. And so, but we didn't think of that. So thank you, Leanne.
You're, you're talking about physical health. What about mental health?
It's referred to in the report as well.
Okay.
That's not to say that you might have, not have suggestions for how we could address it differently or better.
I just think with, what the work that Avanate was doing, that this would go hand in hand.
That's, yes, all of those, all of your suggestions are, please, please record them so that we can capture all of this. That's the best part of this, is that we're capturing in one place our work around different themes.
And I think that work.com was doing too, is the student outreach. And I think that Work.com was doing too, is the student outreach would be part of that.
I'd have to, just have to think about that. I'm sure it could be. I just, you know, I, I forgot how that fits in.
Other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you. We'll look forward to getting the report. The next item on our agenda is 4.03, and it's a review and discussion of the superintendent's monitoring report for our Results Policy 2.4, which focuses on educational technology. We received this report in, at our March meeting. And so at this time, I'm going to open the floor up for a discussion of that report.
What stunned me about this report is how our last thirteen and a half months so shifted how we look at this report.
Isn't that the truth?
Yeah, who would have ever dreamed, you know, when we first did this, that the thirteen months that we've just went through and how it's changed technology and its impact?
I think one of the things that stood out to me was the, the pacing of the kindergarten through third grade of, you know, when you introduce something, and then you would, you know, practice it, and then you would, you know, reiterate it, blah, blah, blah. It's like, I think this year, for the most part, has shown that we can move at maybe a faster pace. And if we can move at a faster pace to get, so that people know how to use the different, you know, parts of the computer, what have you, we can move past that so that we're actually using it as a tool. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, the, the other thing that I really liked was goal number eight. Yes, adding a CTE pathway for technology is long overdue. I'm so glad to see that. And whether it was the legislature that pushed that through by requiring schools to have a math-science credit that is computer-science focused, or, you know, we were building that, or it all coming together at the same time, I think that's fantastic. I think as far as when we think about what sorts of classes that we can offer, um, it's more than help desk, and it's more than, you know, exploring computer science. I think we can do things like game design. We can do things like animation. We can do things like computer programming. We can do, there's so much stuff we can do. And if we can't do that right away, because it's hard to, to implement things right away, I think maybe one thing we can capitalize on is this online learning. If there is Skagit Valley Community College, or Digipen, or other resources that have these classes, I know in the past, Ferndale has had partnerships where a child could take a class at Skagit Valley, but you'd have to get there. And so not many used it. With computer-science classes, if there are any kids that are going to be able to do this online learning, it's probably the computer-science pathway kids. So whether we hire a teacher that's all computer-science, and that's what they do physically at the school, which is a great idea, and I like that, but if we can't get there right away, maybe using some of these COVID perks that we have of online school and looking for resources for a CTE pathway for students, might be a way. I just think this is something where, if a kid really spent some time in it in high school, they could graduate and be, have marketable skills that pay pretty well, fresh out of high school. And that's fantastic. So anyway, very passionate about the technology and CTE pathway.
We're, we're hiring right now, aren't we, John? We have a posting right now for a...
I'm excited to see what sort of classes that we can come up with for that teacher to teach, because I just think there's just so much stuff out there. Web design. Yeah, there's just so much they could do. It's exciting.
The title on it is computer-science, Linda.
What?
The title on it is computer-science.
Yeah, yeah. We've got, the job posting is out right now.
So I think also the shift that we see over this last year, when it comes to technology, just speaks to when you have hands-on learning happening, because that's what they had to do. They had to learn how to use all of this to be able to continue all their other learning. It becomes part, it becomes, easier isn't quite the word I want, but it just, it makes more sense to learn it then. You have a reason to learn it. And I just think in so many areas, when, when people have a reason to learn, it's easier to learn it. Even for us adults.
Other comments?
A lot of kids, a lot of kids have seen that reason this past year. So maybe it has, you know, perks and interest. Like, hey, I could do this. I could make this easier for other people.
Other comments to share? All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Quinn, for the report, and thank you, board members, for your comments, which I will record on the cover sheet to accompany this R2.4 report. So if you have made written comments, Kelly Warner will pick them up when she comes by to get your signatures. And that way, I'll incorporate them into my final review. As a reminder, we will vote on this policy report at our May meeting through the present agenda, just as tonight, we will be voting to accept the report on Operational Expectations Policy 3 on Relationship and Engagement of the Community. That's the one that we received in February and discussed last month. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, this is an update on the process of making a land acknowledgement a regular part of our Ferndale School Board meetings. We started this discussion nearly a year ago, when Dr. Quinn and the school board, when Dr. Quinn and Jesse Deardorff initiated a conversation with the leaders of the Lummi Nation. Since then, Vice Principal and Lummi Tribal Member Heather Layton has taken on the leadership. What's that?
Principal, not vice.
Oh, I'm sorry, principal. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Taken all leadership role at this time. And so I'm going to turn over the meeting to Ms. Layton, who has a colleague and a student with her for, for this discussion.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Altanamit, and I'm a member of the Lummi Nation. As introduced, my English name is Heather Layton, and I'm the principal at Vista Middle School. So I'm really excited to be here tonight and provide the board and our community an update on where we are with our land acknowledgement statement. I will walk through our process and give you an update about where we are and where our work started and where our work has ended and where we plan on going in the future. But like anything that we do with our language and with our culture in explaining who we are and where we come from, I've asked, and forgive me, it's, it's if I'm, if I'm not pronouncing it exactly the, the way that it should be pronounced, Justina, so be patient with me. I'm learning. Esti Tum Sun is doing the best I can in our language. So sometimes we're not real familiar with each other's names. I'm just asking for forgiveness on that in, in, in preference. So I'm going to ask Sabal, Sabaltuk. She's joining us tonight. Her English name is Justina Jo. She is our middle school Lummi language and cultural arts teacher. She just joined our team, maybe just a few weeks ago, about a month ago. What I, what, Justina's a member of the Lummi Nation, and she currently holds two certifications with the Lummi Nation. She holds a certification in Lummi Chosin, and she also holds a certification in cultural arts. So those two will come in very handy as we move our work forward at the middle school and at the high school. She's also, has applied for and should be getting her Washington State cert in both of those areas as well. So I'm very excited to have her as part of our team. She is very knowledgeable with our language. She's very knowledgeable with our songs, with our dance, with our, with our regalia-making, with our beating. And what I know about the children of the Lummi Nation, or any, any children of diverse backgrounds, is when we are able to integrate parts of us into the educational system, we create buy-in. We promote them having a self, a sense of self-awareness and their own building and a sense of belonging. So I would like to have Justina join us. I've asked her to sing a song, sharing a little bit about who we are and where we come from. I've also asked her to do a welcome in our language. So one of the things that we believe is when we speak our, our language, our, our ancestors are with us. And it's our reminder that we're never doing this work alone, and that when we feel tired, we, we, we feel weak, that there's always somebody with us giving us strength. So with that, I will hand it over to Justina.
Hai Shka, yam, sol sonamit. Asiam, nashdhalacha, it'sa, sialalu, it'sa, siathlam. Nistli, konisqala, quiquinosqal, siam. Outsum, telnan, telnang, it'sa, omak chosin, e, esti tamalsin, telnang, e, angis, tsasasen. Sabalktuk, sanasna, choklomisin, shashaysh, shawhwalak, siam, shashaysh, shawhwalak. Hai Shka, konasana, tachil, e, angis, tsai, tinslet, tia, nikalia. Hai Shka, Heather, for introducing me. And I'd like to first acknowledge the elders and respected women in the room. And it's a part of our protocol that we acknowledge our, our elders and our respected women when we speak. I would like to say just a few words and share with you that I'm happy to be here this evening, and I thank you all for coming. I come from the Lummi Nation, and I come from the survivors of the Great Flood. When we say that phrase, shashaysh, shawhwalak, it represents who we come from ancestrally, historically. It represents our families and our elders. And I thank you when I say, e, tsai, tinslet, tia, nikalia. I raise my hands in, in gratitude and thanks for you coming and being here. An important part of being an Aksal, a teacher, for me, is knowing and understanding and seeing that our children are learning and our children are carrying on our stalangan, our way of life, our culture. So this evening, I'm going to sing you a song that talks about the survival of our people and the resilience of our people. And this evening, my children are going to lead us in the song. This is how, this is how I test them to see if they're listening and learning and paying attention. So my children are going to lead the song tonight. And once again, I thank you, Hai Shka. I'm going to get my, my children lined up here really, really quick. Hai Shka, Hai Shka, konis, krialan, and sasqal, Hai Shka, konis, krialan, and sastila. Thank you for listening to my words and, and to our song and blessing this evening.
Thank you.
Hai Shka, Justina. Hi Shka, Justina, sorry. I'm also on grandma duty tonight, so sorry for the distraction back here. But I'm going to ask Kelly Warner to display the document that I sent her this afternoon. If you could do that, please. So I'm going to start by reading the land acknowledgement. And if you, and, and I'm going to call it a draft land acknowledgement, because we're still in the process of getting through LIBC's approval process for it to be public. We will, we were fortunate enough today for Chairman Solomon to give us permission to use it at the groundbreaking ceremony. So if you were at the groundbreaking ceremony today, you've got a little preview of that. But I'll start by reading the draft, which has been in the works. So it is, "We, the Ferndale School District, acknowledge we are residing on the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Lummi people. The Lummi people are the original inhabitants of Washington's northernmost coast and southern British Columbia. They lived in villages throughout this territory and continue to have an ongoing relationship with these areas. Since Time Memorial, they have celebrated life on their land, waterways, and on the traditional ancestral and unceded lands of their people to perpetuate their way of life. Please join us in taking a moment of silence as we honor their ancestors and as we acknowledge the past, present, and future Lummi people as the original inhabitants of this land." So in, when Dr. Quinn asked me to take the lead on seeing this work through the process, one of the things that I thought was absolutely important was that we also acknowledged the existing cultural protocols that exist within the Lummi Nation, but also the government protocols and the business protocols that exist within the Lummi Nation. And so I've been really fortunate to be able to, to both work for Ferndale School District and be a member of the Lummi Nation, so that I have, I have an understanding of both worlds, the educational world and the cultural world. So it's really helped the work that Jesse and I have been doing to move forward. So where we're at in the process is, we put a timeline together. Chairman Solomon gave us permission to put together an ad hoc team. So the ad hoc team consisted of So the ad hoc team consisted of tribal council members. Qualiwasit, who is Ted Solomon from our Lummy Language Department. Cecil Quaid, who is Al Scott Johnny, and he is our Culture Director, he oversees all the cultural within our department. Winita Jefferson, who's a member of the Lummy Nation Ed Board, and Terrence Adams, who is a member of LIBC. And Terrence has been appointed. From the eleven-member board to be an advocate for education. Whether our children are in public school or whether our children attend Lummy Nation School. So along with Jessie and along with myself, so we've been meeting every Thursday. And this is the draft that we came up with and decided was going to be our final draft to propose for, through resolution through LIBC. Is what I had just read you. So from there, this draft has gone to. Called our LIB Shalangen Division. And the word Shalangen means way of life. So we have a culture department at LIBC. We call it our Shalangen Division and they oversee anything within our nation that has to do anything with language, anything with culture, anything with protocols. We absolutely have to have their stamp of approval before we proceed with anything. So this draft, our Shalangen Division met and they approved this particular draft. To go to the next step, which is to our culture commission. So the Culture Commission has some oversight over the Shalangen Division. The Culture Commission is made up of elders and community members. And so they also met and they have approved this as their, as their draft. So now where we're at is. That's a Quaid, Al Scott Johnny is working, there's a checklist that LIBC has. And it's a whole checklist and they, we've done this and we've done this and we've done this and it's gone through the Office of the Reservation Attorney, it's gone through the Culture Department. So this whole checklist that LIBC has, where we're getting this draft resolution ready for our, I'm sorry. This draft land acknowledgement, ready for resolution, so LIBC approves it by resolution. So the intent of that is a couple of things. In Ferndale School District, we always want to be good neighbors and Lummy Nation, we always want to be good neighbors and we want to respect each other's protocols and our processes. But also with that is. Our ad hoc committee also felt like it would be very important that the nation has a land acknowledgement statement that's interchangeable. So if you notice in what I read to you, it, the beginning sentence was we, the Ferndale School District. So the intent is, once it's approved by resolution, we can insert any organizational name or entity in there. It could be we, the city of Ferndale, we, Bellingham School District, we something. So that anybody that asks for a land acknowledgement statement. The, the draft that we have put together for Ferndale would be the model. So from there, once we get it approved by resolution, we will bring it back to Tatisin, our board here, Ferndale. Tatisin is the word Ferndale. We will bring it back to the Tatisin Board and then this board will get the opportunity to adopt it if, if this board chooses. At which time our, our Tatisin Board will. Will, will tell the rest of us in the district how we will use it and when we will use it and so forth. From there, the other piece, there's two pieces, other pieces that will kind of follow on that. One of the things that I feel like is important that we also do an educational campaign. So if you, again, if you are at the groundbreaking ceremony, you had witnessed that Andrew got up and read the land acknowledgement. So the purpose of a land acknowledgement is to acknowledge that we're on First Peoples' Land, that we're on. Tribal members' land. So there's a difference between a land acknowledgement statement and a welcome. So what Andrew did today was the land acknowledgement statement. What Seattle Luck did, Chairman Solomon, is he preceded the land acknowledgement statement and did a welcome. So that's the difference. And so we, we felt like when we. Tatisin Board decides that this is a land acknowledgement that we want to use and how we use it, there also has to be the educational piece. About what is a land acknowledgement and when do we use it and what is a welcome and when do we use it? And then just the, the whole historical piece that comes along with Treaty Day, so we kind of feel like it's an expansion of our next work. We've done Treaty Day, we've done an awareness, we've done an educational campaign. So we also felt like these two things would go hand in hand. And so some of the things that we thought about is that we would partner with Children of the Setting Sun and the Lactamish Foundation. Ferndale School District Teaching and Learning and talk about how we would develop lessons. About the land acknowledgement statement and how those would funnel into our classrooms K-12. The other thing following that, and this was actual, actual work that I, that I understand that. That Paul had started. And there was some work and some thought around raising a Lummy Nation flag on each one of our flag poles in the district. But again, when Dr. Quinn and I talked about it, although I think it's important that we do that along with our land acknowledgement statement, it will be direction that we take from our board. But we also felt like that wasn't anything that we would do symbolically until we've done the educational piece. Because for me as a Lummy tribal member, I think it's really important that we continue to. Educate our neighbors and our students about this land that we utilize. And continued. Continually education, educating our students in the Ferndale School District about the Lummy Nation and who we are and where we come from. So the other thought about this was to continue that work of Paul. And sometime this summer, maybe have a, a raising of the flag ceremony. So. Does anybody have any questions about the process before I continue?
I have a question. First, thank you very much for this, the amount of work going into it and making sure that. Protocols on both sides are respected and followed. I really appreciate that because. If we don't ask, we don't know. And can't learn. And you had said, when you were talking about the welcome and the land acknowledgement and the difference between the two, and today at the groundbreaking ceremony, we had both. Does a land acknowledgement need to be paired with a welcome every time we use it? Should it be? Or?
No, no, not, no, not necessarily. If you have an opportunity like we did today, that would be absolutely great. If you have been to a tribal canoe journey. When the canoes come to shore and all the canoes lined up. And then our, the last one we had, our late Chief C. Elite, along with Seattle Luck, our tribal chairman. Our Vice Chairman and a couple other people, they line the shore and as, but we, we welcome them in our language, but we don't do the land acknowledgement. Because in that particular setting, we don't have both groups represented. So today at the groundbreaking, we had both groups represented, and so it was a great way to do a land acknowledgement and a welcome. When we're at home, we just do the welcome. So if, if we're, Tatisin Board decides that they want to adopt this land acknowledgement. You would just do the land acknowledgement and then proceed with your work. If a teacher chooses it to use in a classroom, they would just do the land acknowledgement and then proceed with their work.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next, the other thing about this is, we also had a long discussion about. One, like I said, the importance of land acknowledgement, but we also had a long discussion about. Wanting a land acknowledgement and, and representation of all of our diverse groups and, and keep in mind, I understand that we have. A lot of diversity in Ferndale School District, I'm not trying to ignore any other race or culture that exists within our district, but. We happen to be talking about the land acknowledgement and, and the Lummy Nation today, so I just want to make sure. To any of our, any of our families that are watching this, I recognize that we have a lot of diversity in our community. But we had a lot of discussions about. You know, this needs to be, this, we would like this to be a relationship change. And not just a technical change. A lot of times we get so busy in our work and wanting something and wanting something and wanting something. That we just check the box. It's just some check the box and we just check the box and it becomes something that we do. Instead of who we are as a district, right? And, and it's really important that we get to the point where we. It's not just the box that we check because it looks good. Or it's not just the pop box that we check because this grant says we have to. But really being the foundation of the work where we start. Recognizing our cultures and our diversity and it just becomes something we do, right? And so with that being said. I would like to introduce Harmony Devaney. I'm actually very proud of Harmony, she is a former student of Lummy Nation School, so I've gotten to be her principal. She's very charming, she's very smart and she's very brilliant. So one of the things I love about teaching is we learn so much from our children. We learn so much from our children and if we just quiet our own minds down enough. We're actually gonna learn more children, more from our children than sometimes we do our colleagues. So Harmony's written, I think it's a brilliant poem. Sorry, I think it's a brilliant poem and she, it's called Anti-Land Acknowledgement. So when I read the title of the poem Anti-Land Acknowledgement, I want you to think about what the words say. As she's speaking. When I first read it, I know what I thought about it and what I thought about it was, you know what, we have a very strong woman right here. Very strong Native American woman who was asking us through the words of poems. Which is a very powerful, powerful method of communicating. She's asking us for a land acknowledgement to be more than a box that gets checked. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Harmony Devaney.
Thank you. This is not a land acknowledgement. Acknowledgement is a Band-Aid on a bullet wound, no. Acknowledgement is a doctor seeing your wound and simply stating you're bleeding. Just watching you suffer, but he acknowledged it, right? Acknowledgement is thoughts and prayers. I don't want Band-Aids, I want surgery, I want life, I want action, this is not a land acknowledgement. It is not enough to acknowledge the atrocities indigenous people have faced and continue to face. Let's take it way back. 1492, Christopher Columbus steps his nasty feet on what is now the Bahamas. As a result of his greed, 12 to 15 million indigenous people died, 50,000 from suicide alone, and this fool still has a holiday. This is not a land acknowledgement. Who does acknowledgement really benefit? 1782, the European, European diseases had contact with the Coast Salish people before the Europeans themselves. In the first epidemic of smallpox alone, two-thirds of the Coast Salish people died, this is not a land acknowledgement. 1862, President Lincoln publicly hung 38 Dakota men. 1863, US Army kills 250 or more Shoshone people. 1880, an estimated 300 Sioux men killed for participating in the Ghost Dance. Wounded Knee massacre of 1990, 150 Lakota people dead. And the list goes on and on and on, this is not a land acknowledgement. Kill the Indian, save the man. From 1870 to 1973, indigenous children were stolen and sent to boarding schools. Where they were reeducated, which really means beaten, abused, and assaulted for being indigenous, this is not a land acknowledgement. Present-day America, indigenous women are 2.5 times more likely to be sexually assaulted than any other ethnicity. 56% of indigenous women have been assaulted, that means my sisters and I are more likely to get assaulted than to graduate. This is not a land acknowledgement. I'm not asking you to stop acknowledging the land you occupy, I am telling you not to stop your allyship there. Acknowledgement doesn't find my missing sisters, doesn't give clean running water to the Navajo Nation, doesn't stop pipelines and mining on reservations. In case it isn't abundantly clear, I don't want your acknowledgement. I want your money. If you say you're an ally, I want you to put your money where your mouth is and spend like one. That means buying from native-owned businesses, donating to organizations that are helping indigenous people, like Women Empowering Women for Indigenous Nations. Or the Native American Rights Fund. I don't want your acknowledgement, I want your time. Take the time to read books like Bury My Heart at Wounded Knee by Dee Brown, or Empire of the Summer Moon by Essie Gwynn. Acknowledgement is only the first step of being an ally to indigenous people, just don't make it your last step. Do not fall into the cycle of complacency, this isn't a land acknowledgement. This is a call to action, thank you.
Hi Shka Harmony.
Thank you.
Hi Shka. So when I think about Harmony's poem, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm interpreting it as she's not saying that we shouldn't do a land acknowledgement. But she's saying that the work doesn't stop there. That we should consider all the work and, and, and understand our history and. Acknowledge that the history happened and that we continue to move on in a good way as neighbors and partners and, and as people that co-inhabitate this land together now. So I guess I'll open it up to questions, but before that. Board Member Deirdre Dorf, is there anything you would like to add about the work we've done? You're muted.
I'm impressed. I like that Heather took the rain and ran with it and. Couldn't have asked for anybody better. Harmony, that was good. And Justina Jo, I'm happy to see you're aboard with Ferndale.
Hi Shka. Is this, is there any, does anybody have any questions for Harmony or myself or Jessie or where we're at in the process?
I just, I want to thank you, all three of you. This was incredible, I so appreciate the effort, I so appreciate where it's going and the thought process, thank you, I can't thank you enough. I mentioned before we got started that on the sixth, we're having a regional WASDA meeting. And it's, it's in my region and so as part of that. I am asked to do a land acknowledgement. I, I will follow your lead on that, if I can use the one that's been used by, by Andrew that you showed tonight, I would, I would be very happy to do that. If I need to say that there is not one with a final approval and I need to respect that and not do a land acknowledgement. I absolutely can do that. I would love to see if Harmony could come read her poem at that regional meeting, if that's a possibility. I, I would much rather have that than the land acknowledgement if I have to choose between the two, but there would be time for both. If that's something that, that's an option, so.
Leanne, I think it's virtual, right?
It is virtual.
Media, so Harmony, I'll connect with you and let you know the time. And if you're available and, and are willing, I'll take care of that, Leanne, with Harmony.
Thank you.
We, we're, we're connected now, I know how to, I know how to find her.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you for, thank you for all of it.
And I'll touch, I'll, I'll touch base with Seattle Luck Chairman, Chairman. Lawrence Solomon, and I'm sure that he will, he will grant permission to use it for that purpose as well, but I will touch base with him this week and let you know. But getting it through the resolution process, I imagine is going to be maybe two or three weeks at the most, and then we don't always have to ask for permission.
Yeah, I would. Oh, go ahead, Melinda, go ahead.
Um, the, I want to say thank you for, again, thank you for what you guys have done. And as you know, somebody that's always learning on this. It's the assume good intentions type of thing, I think there's a lot of times where I assume good intentions. But I'm sure that I have, you know, stuck my foot in my mouth or. You know, just gone about it the wrong way, so I really appreciate the Lummy Nation. Being there and helping us learn and learning in public. And making mistakes, but then helping us learn from them and move on, because. If we're too afraid to make mistakes and our neighbors won't help us move on from them, then we're not going to move anywhere, it's easier to be stagnant. So thank you so much for letting us learn in public.
Hi Shka. So it's kind of like what Justina just showed us, right, like we teach through our children and. And we don't grow and we don't learn if we don't step out of our comfort zone. So me, the Lummy People, Justina, the Lummy Nation, we are inherently educators. And that is what we do, we teach people, so Justina, she grooms her children, she teaches them to do what she does so that when. But, but unless we take those risks, unless we ask the questions, then we'll always be where we're at. So the good work happens when we are asking questions, when we are uncomfortable, when we are outside of our comfort zone, that's when the relationship gets stronger. And that's when the good work happens, so I appreciate you being willing to take those risks and being willing to explore. We are very giving people, the Lummy Nations are very giving people. We are very giving people, the Lemmy Nations are very giving people, and we're always willing to help educate who we are and where we come from because that ultimately brings our relationship stronger, and then that funnels down into our children and our schools. So, Hi, Shka.
Yeah, I would just like to say as a, I mean, I say I'm a transplant from North Carolina, but it has been 20 years, but nonetheless, it's a continual education for me. And tonight's presentations were powerful, and so I really appreciate that. I'd say you have a gift as a poet. So, thank you for sharing that and appreciate the song and seeing your family participate, and it's very moving to see that. So thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you, Justina, thank you, Jessie, thank you, Harmony, and thank you, Heather. Please convey our thanks to the leadership of the Lemmy Nation for their collaboration in this process. We really appreciate it.
Hi, Shka.
All right, the next item is 5.02, and that's a standing report on our bond projects. I want to start by acknowledging the groundbreaking ceremony that took place at Ferndale High School earlier today. And I can just say, I think it was very well planned and so inclusive of so many aspects of our community. It really was a community celebration of being able to take the first steps towards a new high school. It just, you know, I think the thought that went into it and the selection of speakers and singers and music and stuff was just really a great celebration for our district. So thank you, Linda, and all those who worked on that, and then I'll open it up to others to make their own comments.
Well, I just want to make sure that everybody knows Heather was my partner on that as well. You know, she's doing her superintendent's internship this year, so she says yes to lots of things. And so, but we, and we worked with some kids down at the high school, but it was, so it was fun to put on. And other than the fact that it was a little chilly, I think it was, went off, it went well.
And we didn't think about the train?
No, we didn't.
Can't schedule the train.
Yeah.
I was wondering when it first started, I was like, I wonder if they planned this around the train schedule.
What would a groundbreaking ceremony be without the train?
That's true.
I really liked the juxtaposition of hearing the student body president, Mr. Granger from 1965. And, you know, there was what the sports were, and there were no sports for girls, and then following it up by the current ASB president and next year's ASB president, and just all the things that women have done, or young women have done in Ferndale School District. It was, gives me goosebumps now, kind of thinking about it. That wasn't too long ago where there weren't many opportunities.
It was the first larger gathering that I have attended in 13 and a half months, and I will say I had a little trepidation over that, but it felt, it was outdoors and it was spacious, and I felt we could all be as safe as we felt we needed to be, and everyone was masked, and so thank you for providing such a wonderful hour. It was really fabulous.
And I don't think Mark and I have any other updates really tonight other than just to remind you that this really is the middle of the process. We have been working on all of those things. The invisible work has been occurring for almost two years now, and I'm glad that if you hadn't had a chance to meet them before, that you got to meet some of the members of Dykman Architects and Cornerstone Construction, and then if we add in Construction Services Group, really, really, really a strong team. But now, starting actually next week with the demolition, I think of the, we think of the grandstands, now the work, the visible work begins. Now we start working the plan, and it's, this is the exciting part. It's all been exciting, but this will be, this will be really fun. So, Mark, I don't think there's anything else pressing tonight.
Nothing pressing, but one, kind of, since we're sharing exciting news, the one other kind of fun item is the live webcam.
Oh, yeah.
Is now on the website, on the district website. So next week, when the work starts happening, you will actually be able to log in and watch it happen live.
I have a question. I don't know, I'm assuming they're not going to overlap too much, but with the Thornton and Malloy construction that's going on right now for the overpass, and when we have to close, if we have to close roads and detour stuff for the high school, are those going to be happening at the same time? Do you know?
Likely.
So is it going to be like all on Malloy, or is it going to be a different sort of place that... I just think about those people who live on Malloy.
Yeah.
Especially if you live between the high school and Thornton.
Yeah.
Move, I'm sorry, don't move, but they might be thinking about it.
You know, we can clarify with Cornerstone, but as of right now, we have not really discussed many road closures. And I think largely because the, most of the materials are planned on bringing in, construction traffic's going to be coming in through the railroad entrance to try to minimize impact to neighborhood traffic. But we'll clarify how much of that we're anticipating with Cornerstone.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was pretty cool because there are bulldozers and earth mover, moving equipment scattered around the school now that you can see over by the gym and on the field and stuff. So it looks like it's really getting underway. So any other comments on today's ceremony? Well, again, thank you to everyone who worked on that. It was really a job well done, and it's exciting to see us moving into this phase when the work will really be visible. I'm just curious, Mark, with the cam, are we going to be able to do one of those really fun things where you speed it up and see the school suddenly rise up out of the ground?
Yeah, they're doing a time lapse.
Time lapse, that's the right word.
Yep.
See, if I'd had computer science in high school, I would have just used that word like that.
Yes.
How do you find it on the website, Mark? Will it be on the homepage or?
On the.
Bond tab.
Yeah, on the bond tab.
So that's going to take the place of the Panda cams that everybody logs into, will be the high school cam, so. All right. And you can find out, for those who are tuning in, you can find out more information about our bond projects and the bond oversight committee on the district website, and in the weekly bond updates that Dr. Quinn publishes every Friday. Last week was update 104. So we keep rolling on. So the next item on the agenda is an update on sponsorship and community donations related to the new Ferndale High School project. So we know that we've talked about this several times, and it was initiated by the bond oversight committee. And so we've had it on our agenda for several months. Tonight, we're sharing with the board a report written by one of the bond oversight committee co-chairs, Anya Milton, who met with a small group of people to explore this topic in more depth. At next month's meeting, we've invited Anya to join us so we can discuss the report and its recommendations. So thank you in advance for taking time to review the report in preparation for that discussion. All right. So Linda, we just get a copy. I just want to be sure everybody has a copy of that.
Mark, that, you need to ask Mark that.
Mark.
It's posted on Board Docs.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item 5.0.
Andrew, do you want a hard copy? Do you want?
I can, I can take care of that. I can go on Board Docs and.
Okay, I was going to say, if you wanted Kelly to bring you one, she could.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
The next item is.
Andrew, sorry, if we have questions about that, should we submit them ahead of time to Anya? Or is it, will we be having that full discussion at that time?
I think it would be a good idea to let Anya know your questions in advance. She'll be there to discuss them, but I always appreciate having questions in advance.
Yeah, it's always nice to give some lead time.
Just send them directly to Anya, and if you don't have her email, you can send them to me and I'll forward them. Just don't send them to the rest of the board, because then we would be out of, you know that, but you can't have just an online discussion with the whole board.
But tonight, we're just receiving this report. We're not just.
Yes, you're not discussing it, no.
Other comments or questions on the report? All right, so item 5.04 is a report on the draft timeline for the selection of the new superintendent to replace Dr. Quinn, who will be retiring on September 30th, 2021. At our March meeting, the board charged Chair John Fairborn and myself to do some research to develop a timeline and get a sample request proposal for search firms that will need for this process. So this time, I'm going to ask John to share what we've done since our last meeting.
Thank you, Andrew. Andrew did some pre-work. I think he referred to it in March from the ESD, working with the ESD superintendent to gather some material. So use those, and Linda and Andrew have a draft of a timeline that would provide a consultant by the end of the school year, allow for input to be gathered through the beginning of next fall, and then a posting that would go through January, and then would allow for the hiring of our new superintendent in February of 2022. Additionally, in the materials was a template that I used and drafted requests for proposals from the search companies that we were provided. I'm using the dates from that timeline to give the firms an idea of what we wanted. Linda and Andrew also have that draft, which can be shared with you after this meeting. In there, there are 11 firms that do this work. Five of them are primarily work through Washington and the Pacific Northwest. Another six of those do nationwide searches, so that's who we'd be sending the request for proposals out to. So we've got some draft documents for review as soon as we're ready to do that.
So I don't, I'm just going to throw this out, but, you know, we'd like to get this out before the end of the school year. So I'm wondering if we could send this to the board and get feedback from you on these draft documents, if you find anything that is missing or that you really want to add, and then put it on the agenda for our May 11th meeting, and then possibly go ahead and be able to move ahead once everyone has had a chance to see the proposal, and then we can go ahead and take the next steps of mailing it out.
Is that okay? Remember, we'll send the RFP, but even if it's not perfect, you'll get a chance to interview these firms. So if you don't get every single question answered, any of them who want to be considered will probably do a virtual interview, so you get a chance later. So we sometimes think about that, that if the posting isn't perfect, if it gets the right people to apply, you can then zero in.
And I think what Linda's saying is true of the timeline as well. So we saw some samples of some timelines from other people have done this, but the search firm's going to have a very good idea on where we maybe need to tweak that timeline to fit to fit the needs out just a little bit better.
So, Board, is that all right with you if we send that RFP out to you to review, and then we can approve or make changes and then hopefully approve it on the 11th, and then move ahead with getting it out? Okay, great. I gotta have consensus on that. And John, thank you for helping me with that and for the work you've done. Great resource. Okay, well, moving on to the next item. Get my notes here. Is 6.01, and that's a presentation of a set of documents the board needs to approve as part of our bond project at Ferndale High School. As I understand it, the constructability report and implementation plan are requirements for us to receive state matching funds. So at this time, I'm going to call Mr. Dibok to provide more information.
Yes, thank you. So the approval of the constructability review is a state requirement in order to receive state matching funds. So the SCAP money to state match is part of the de-form process. It is actually, it's very similar to the value engineering process that went on very early in the design, where the contractor and CSG and all the engineers and the consultants all got together and kind of looked for ways to save money. It's similar process, but what they're doing is they're looking at the plans in this case, so they get an 80% complete set of design documents, plans, and then they look at it and say, okay, are there any conflicts? Or is there any issues with actually being able to construct the building? And it's designed basically to make sure you get the lowest bid price and you don't get hit with a lot of change orders during the process. So if you had a set of structural plans that didn't allow for, you know, dockwork, let's say, to go through, say, beams in the way, that causes a pretty sizable cost increase when you get into construction. So this process is basically designed to catch those things upfront. The other, the big advantages that we have on this case is going through the GCCM process. So remember, our contractor is onboard as part of the design team. So they're constantly working in a constructability review process. So it's kind of a little more natural in the GCCM than it is in the design-build world, which is really where this comes from as part of the state requirement. Anyway, it was a very, very thorough process. You know, the original document was over 500 pages and had really a cast of hundreds that went through every single little detail, looking for ways to become more efficient or making sure we avoid any conflict. So we have the best plans possible, can build it as close to originally designed as possible. So. Any questions?
I just, I have a question. Well, I looked at the, I looked at it, and it's like, oh my gosh, this is really confusing. So I'm glad we've got good people that know what they're doing. But the requirement to do this, is it school construction over $50,000 or school construction over 50,000 square feet?
Dollars, I believe.
So we should just maybe edit the notification in Board Docs?
I thought it said dollars.
Ellie, did you get that? Or Mark can take care of it tomorrow.
It does say $50,000 square feet.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
And what was posted on Board Docs are all of the comments from the 500 pages, correct?
Correct.
We can get you the 500 pages.
No, thanks.
That's.
I told my husband, oh my gosh, it's a 500-page document, and he's an. I told my husband, oh my gosh, it's a five hundred page document and he's an engineer and he's like, I don't think you have to read that whole thing. And I asked him, I was like, do you think I'm going to? Do you think I wanted to?
I was gonna say, you might have a copy laying around the house already, so.
He can read them.
Well, I can tell you.
Condensed version is, is appreciated.
I can tell you, the bond oversight committee members have read the five hundred pages.
They're, love them.
They are on top of that, so I can.
Tell you that I have.
I can guarantee that, yes.
Which shows you that we have some people on bond oversight who really know what they're doing.
Absolutely.
We absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very dedicated.
Alright, if there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion to accept the constructibility report and implementation plan as it has been presented to us.
So I can move to accept the constructibility review report and implementation plan as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
Alright, it has been moved to accept the constructibility report and implementation plan as has been presented to us. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. The next series of items uh, represent regular opportunities for sharing by participants in our board meeting. So we're gonna start with our student board representative, Kong. So uh, any sharing from you, Kong?
Hi.
Aye.
Good afternoon. Um, today, uh, this month in general, I don't have anything major to talk about. My project of the thought exchange is still being in the process of being rolling out to students. Um, I've been busy for the past few weeks, uh, trying to make videos to advertise the program. So um, it's gonna be uh, soon, the, the project. Um, I guess if there's anything to talk about today, um, I think the best thing to talk about, uh, my experience is the groundbreaking ceremony. Um, I thought it was amazing. Um, was it an ex, an exciting day? Yes. Was it also a sad day? Sad days? Yeah. In a, in a way, I feel like today marked an end of an era. However, it was also a beginning of a new one. As a student from Fernando High School, I believe that today um, like was the first day that enabled students, families and our communities to have a chance to learn more about our school buildings and also its process. Also, this new school building will, future, into the future, will help um, open more opportunities for future students to gain more education, to gain a better education within like a better environment. Um, from what I know and learn, society grow every day from the interactions between people. People's belief and actions are what shape our stru, the structure of our society and communities, communities. Um, school is the best place to allow education to have an impact on people. Um, mainly the future generation. If anything, both our school culture and environment have a major impact of how student believe, beliefs, uh, shaping their ideologies. Um, so yeah, like they said, education is power and today was like an impactful day.
Thank you. Alright, uh, I don't think Avneet is on the call tonight, so uh, we'll move on to board member sharing.
So I'm gonna put a plug in for the Thursday, May sixth WASD regional meeting. It is virtual. Kelly Warner has asked a number of times if you want to go to let her know. Um, I, um, besides maybe being able to hear that amazing poem again, uh, we will also be spending time in small groups taught, virtually, talking about what we've learned most over this past year as a school board member. Some, giving some examples and hearing examples of how the district, our district, other districts have been able to turn the challenge into an opportunity. And moving forward, how does our district plan to support students, staff and community? So that'll be small group time and then we'll have some general updates from partners. And then the last half hour will be a review of the legislative session. It will be the first regional meeting since the session ended and so um. Our WASDA um, ledge organizer extraordinaire will be there to give us a wrap up. And I think that should be very interesting. So I hope you can attend. It starts at six o'clock and it ends at seven thirty.
Alright, anyone else? I'll say a quick plug for my home front. I appreciate all the, the well wishes for my wife who's doing very well after her kidney donation. And she's up and about and walking, you know, a mile and three quarters today. After today was one week post-surgery and she's already out uh, walking a mile and three quarters. So she's doing great and the recipient is doing great as well. Everything is working as planned. No sign of rejection, so everybody's excited. So thanks for your, your well wishes on that. Uh, Dr. Quinn?
I, the only thing I wanna share, I feel like I've had plenty of chance to share, is that Mark and I are working out all the details. And so the next time we get together, it will be an in-person meeting. We're working, that will be our May eleventh meeting and we're going to um, not use not use the Vista library. And so little, we're gonna use the Mountain View, the old Mountain View library that we've converted to a professional development space. It's larger. I think Jesse, the access, the, from the sidewalks should be work for you. Um, we have more space, we have some breakout spaces and we'll, I'll, I'll send you more in my um, update. But um, we're planning to get together and I um, heard from four of you that you can meet at five thirty. So that Kong and Avneet and I are work, and Fay are working on um. Soliciting candidates for another student board member to take the Avneet's place when she graduates. So the first ninety minutes or so will be devoted to those interviews. And that's all I have to share.
Okay. Linda, uh, are you planning or do you have, um, I don't know if tonight's the right night or time to do it, but I saw that uh, graduation is set for a Friday night. Is there a, a heads up for us to know what to be expecting with that?
Um, oh, the, the only thing I told you in a recent letter is that you will be among those that can get in. I'm not sure, I assume it'll be a little bit like last year or a little bit like regular. Um, where there is a limited capacity, so unlike the past, we won't be inviting all of our staff to come. Uh, because we're saving the capacity for family members of graduates. But um, if you are able, of course, we would like to have the board members there to hand out. At least, I mean, I mean, I'm hoping some of you can be there to be part of that official ceremony. So keep the time open, details to follow.
Thank you.
I have a question back on the student board member applicant, applicants. If a student is interested, who would they contact? The high school principal, you?
Um, a- any of the above, and it's, and the application is also online. And, but the, um, Jer, anybody in the main office. Kong and Avneet are working on getting messages out. They can go to Kong, they can go to Avneet, they can go to Jeremy. If they contact any of the exec team members, they'll help them figure it out. Or the assistant principals at the high school. And this year, we're looking for someone who's currently a sophomore. So will um, be willing to serve in their junior and senior years.
Great. Other questions, comments? I will open up sharing to the exec team. Okay. The final items on the agenda are the consent agendas. The superintendent's consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for action but requires, requiring board's final approval. The board's consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to address. The board has had an opportunity to review all of these items prior to this meeting and is therefore able to expedite our work by taking action on them as a group rather than one at a time. These same items are also available for the public review on Board Docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve both consent agendas.
Andrew, before we get a motion, one quick question. I noticed on um, the board consent agenda, the nine point zero three, the approval of the monitoring report. Were, that, it just has the, doesn't have the summary. I didn't know if we were getting.
Yeah, you can, that's my fault. Um, good catch. We could take out that item and approve it next month.
That's fine. We'll do that.
Okay.
Did you get that, Kelly? Uh, she did, I'll.
Yes, I did. I got it.
I'll make sure. Okay.
Alright then, it has been moved to approve, well Kevin, wait, are you making a recommendation? Uh, I mean a motion? I don't have a motion yet, actually.
I think you just asked the question. I can make a motion to approve the superintendent consent agenda and the board consent agenda with the exception of item nine point oh three as attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
Alright, so it's been moved to approve the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda minus item nine point oh three as I'm, as attached here too and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, at this time, the board is gonna convene into executive session for approximately forty-five minutes to discuss a personnel matter, a possible real estate transaction and an upcoming negotiation with several of our employee groups. When we come back into general session following the executive session, the board may take action on a personnel issue. So at this time, board uh, convene and exec team members who are, are needed, we will convene to the executive session.
Um, ma, before we do that, it, did all of you get the invitation from me, except you, Kong?
I'm not sure.
Um, I sent it right about seven o'clock.
Yeah, I have to go get my phone and forward it to myself. I'm sure I did, but I might be a little bit.
Okay.
I'll text you if I have any problems, but I think.
Okay. Okay. Then I'm leaving to start the other next meeting.
Okay.
You
Heather, I thought I sent you an invitation to the executive session.
You did, but I wasn't sure if I was really supposed to go.
Well, I sent it to you as an administrative intern, I mean a superintendent intern. It's fine.
I heard the announcement as exec board and.
Well, you serve.
And TES and board, so I wasn't sure. I visited cash why you guys went off. I'll know next time.
Okay, I just since you were here, I thought you could join us, yes. I'm just waiting for, there he is.
Okay, sorry. When it kicked me out, I got had to relog in, so. So I hereby call the meeting back into general session for the April 29th, April 27th meeting of the Ferndale School Board. So at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding the appointment of Andrew Andruschenko.
So I would move to terminate the employment of Andrew Andruschenko effective.
Immediately.
Immediately. Thank you.
All right, it has been moved to terminate the employment of Andrew Andruschenko immediately. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, we have now reached the end of the agenda for the April 27th regular business meeting. Our next meeting is a special meeting scheduled in person at Mountain View on Tuesday, May 11th. At approximately 5:30 PM on May 11th, we will be interviewing student candidates for the position that will be open on the school board when APNE graduates from high school this spring. At approximately 7:00 PM on May 11th, we will turn our attention to a discussion of the equity focused work going on in our school district. Our next regular school board business meeting will be held the last Tuesday of May, which will be May 25th. So thank you all for your participation this evening, and at this point, I declare this meeting adjourned.